I see it.
All right.
All right, let's bow our heads for prayer. Family Father, we thank you for this wonderful weather we're enjoying and for the mercies you show us day by day. We pray for this meeting tonight. May it benefit the borough. Thank you for our loyal employees, for our first responders, for our police. Thank you for keeping them safe. We pray that you would continue to walk with us and help us as we discuss important issues for the benefit of Newville now and Newville in the future. So we ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
All right, Kim, this is an exciting time of the night where we try to all do the Pledge of Allegiance all at the same time. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
To the republic.
Which stands.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty.
Justice.
And justice.
You'd think that after doing that for a year that we would have this down.
No, no.
That was a bad one. All right, roll call. Mr. Crouch.
President.
Mr. Darius. This is Deal.
President.
Mr. Erickson.
President.
Mr. Sinkovitz. He is just just popped on. Mr. Penner. Here. All right, rolling down through the consent agenda in your packet, you have meeting minutes from February 23, the regular meeting, and also March 2 of the public work session. Any questions on those?
Yes, sir.
Okay, approval of bills. Turn to my page here quick. All right, here we go. Edmund Fuels, 568 60 54, 64, sorry. Co Oil Service, 561 60. Barry Tire, 5295. Hint Fire Protection, 481 75. JFG Funding, 269. Higher Information Group, 113 52. L and N Automotive, Inc., 113 50, I'm sorry, 167 93. Raybold Service, $48. Dana Tech Security, $380. The Sentinel, 162 76. PA Municipal Code Alliance, 371 25. US Municipal Supply, 484 24. Salzman Hughes, $30. Hoover Plumbing, 187 75. And Doc O, 49 36. And M A B Paints, $290 44 cents for a total of $4,219.20 from the general fund. There are no highway aid bills. Questions about those? Hey, the treasures report, all of these are ending February 28. Yeah, okay, here we go. So general fund checking, $2,413.27. Rental funds, $1,372.82. Street lighting account, $106.25. Fire tax, $55,384.5 cents. Expense accounts, the general expense, $1,044.34. Newville area events, $5,235.11. Highway aid, liquid fuels, $8,100.42. Payroll checking, $24,654.81. The police pension plan, $361,055.7 cents. Oh, I gotta let Bob in. The non-union pension plan, $488,113.91. The Borough Joint Veteran Council Fund, $946.63. Capital Improvement Fund, $1,467.25. And the Tax Anticipation Loan Fund has $989.95. Any questions on those?
Yes, sir.
Hey, also in your packets, you have the Police Chief Report, the Mayor Report, the Zoning and Code Enforcement Officer Report, Street Superintendent Report, Chief Plan Operators Report, and the Field Operations Report. Any questions on those?
I did have one for the chief on. I can't find my paper, but it had to do with assisting other municipalities or and it seemed like it was a larger number than normal. And I was just wondering if that had to do with the dog or if it was, you know, just other ongoing things.
The majority of that is EMS calls.
Oh, okay. Okay, just curious.
Hey, any other, any other questions? All right, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
They moved.
She already moved, need a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, we have a guest with us tonight, Ms. Kim Spasic. Spas, wait, I said that wrong. There's a, there's a famous actor, Spasic, isn't there?
Yeah, Sissy.
How do you, how do you say your last name, Spasic?
It's pronounced Spizak.
Spizak, okay. All right, take her away.
Oh, well, I just wanted to see your faces and put names and faces together. I'm affiliated with one of your new neighbors and business partners, Ship Daddy. The boys are former students and one happens to be my son and lifelong community members of the South Middleton Township and South Middleton School District. And they have hired me to do their community relations and to work on their student internships with local universities and to work with the Chamber of Commerce and to do all their blogging, just lots of things, the writing components for them. So I told the boys I would love to attend the meeting just to see your faces and I've heard so many wonderful things about you from the eyes and mouths of the 28 and 29-year-old boys. So I was really hoping to just meet you and thank you for allowing the boys to come into the facility and we're really looking forward to being part of the Newville community.
Well, I think it's, I probably speak for everybody. Well, not probably, I do speak for everybody. We're excited to have them in town. We're excited to see what they're going to grow into and certainly happy to help them in any way we can to make sure that they're successful because, you know, when they're successful, Newville's successful. So did I hear that you, so you work with internships?
Yes, I do. I just retired from South Middleton School District after 35 years. And I did most of my time there as a fifth grade teacher and then ended in the administrative part of the work. So farther from the children, but still very noble work and student services. And so now I'm kind of rolling into that same component of education. We have a couple of interns with Shipman'sburg University currently and we have reached out to your college and Penn State Harrisburg. I have not made contact with Wilson College yet, but I'd like to do so. And of course Hack. And we're not quite ready for high school students yet. We have a lot of work to do in terms of evolving our curriculum for our college interns first. And then perhaps we can welcome high school students and partner with the Big Spring School District and Shipman'sburg School District and hopefully South Middleton School District if you'll allow a few more bugglers in the area to work with us as well.
Well, when you're ready for high school, let me know because we have a phenomenal intern program at school, so.
Excellent.
Yeah, so, and she may even be able to help you curricularly as well, Mrs. Black.
Okay.
Does a great job. I think we have probably close to 100 kids in internships.
Wow, that's terrific.
So.
Thank you.
Anything else from anybody?
No, but just, I just want to say welcome because we do have a fantastic little community here, so we're here to help you guys if, you know, if you need any help from any of us and just welcome.
Thank you so much. We hope to be good neighbors and we're working currently on some grant writing to do some improvement to the exterior of the building. The boys are very ambitious to fulfill a commitment to really make the night outside of the building look nice with some exterior paint, doors and windows, some landscaping. So they're anxious to get that ball rolling. So we hope to use some grant money to supplement for that cause as one of our first improvement projects.
That's terrific.
And we can just stop in out there sometime and say, hey, I just want to look around.
You certainly may do that. They work some long hours, but between the hours of eight and five are the best to catch someone there. And don't be daunted by the sign on the door. There's a COVID posted sign. But, you know, of course, with a call or you're welcome to email me, I can meet you at the door and certainly would be happy to give you a tour.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Good. Anybody else? All right, you're more than welcome to stay as long as you want, you know, and chime in as, as you, as you see fit as well, okay?
That sounds wonderful and I don't want to interrupt the flow of your meeting, so I wasn't planning on staying unless it would benefit Ship Daddy or you for me to stay. Is it, what are your thoughts on that?
We have nothing Ship Daddy on the agenda tonight.
You're always welcome.
You are.
Well, that's the next.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say thank you for making me feel so welcome.
But could you share your email address?
Yes, my email is kimmyfirstname@goshippdaddy.com.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much.
All right.
Great meeting you all.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. All right, Police Chiefs Report.
Police report for the month of February 2021. Total calls for service for the month, 216. Traffic enforcement for the month. We issued 76 citations and 15 warnings. One parking violation for the month. Patrol vehicle mileage for the month of February, 2,210 miles. Total warrants outstanding are 43.
Any questions, Chief? Okay, anything else, Chief?
No, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Fire Chief Report, we don't have a written report. Maybe, Michael, do you want to, you want to do that now or do you want to do it under administration about our meeting last night?
Either one is fine. We can just do that now.
Okay, let's do that.
The fire company has asked the borough to contribute, I believe, $50,000 toward the new rescue truck that they need to purchase. We had gotten that request a month or so ago and we are, met with them last night, the administration committee met with fire company officials last night, got a little more information on that. The current machine is a 1992, so it's got quite a bit of age on it. It is, there are cycles that the standards are, go through and are reviewed for the, for the various types of fire equipment. And Trent told us that they, this, this truck is actually five cycles behind on the, on meeting the current standards, so it's, it is time for replacement. The, the new vehicle will have a pump and water on it unlike the current vehicle. Current truck is, is rescue only. This one will have a pump and a 500-gallon tank of water on it just so if they are the first truck on the, on an accident scene and there is fire breaks out in a vehicle, they need to extricate somebody from or something they have capability to deal with that instead of relying on fire extinguishers only. So that's, that's the primary purpose of having the, the tank on the trucks. The they gave us a few specs on it. It's going to have 100% LED lighting, it's going to have a generator on it. The total cost right now is at $714,979. They, that includes a $50,000 contingency for potential changes. But that price is locked in at that, at that rate. And if they, if the contingency fund isn't used, of course, they'll come in less. Some other municipalities have already contributed money toward this and so they're asking us to take our fire tax monies, I believe it is, and, and put it toward this, this engine. And then we asked them also what the next need will be and that is, they're saying in 2026, Engine Two, which is an engine tanker, will need to be replaced as well. And so they are going to be sending us a request to dedicate our fire tax monies going forward toward, toward that and possibly replacing some breathing apparatus. So that's kind of a quick overview. I think it certainly meets the certainly they have a need for, for the, the funding and that's what we collect the fire tax for, so recommend that we and fulfill their, their request.
Is that a motion, Michael?
I can make it a motion, sure.
All right. All right, so the motion, I believe, is to, I'm a little confused. I see Michael join in the room, but I think you're still on the phone. So the motion, motion, I believe, is to we good? All right. I think the, the motion is to approve $50,000 of fire tax money to be paid to the issuer of the loan for the incoming fire truck, which should be, should be delivered in June of next year, so that, that should probably be when that payment will be issued.
So Mike made a motion?
Well, why don't somebody else make it? Because I don't, I think he's switching over from the phone to his computer.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. So Ed's moved it. Do we have a second?
I'm seconding it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those.
One thing if I can.
Uh huh.
After we come off of this Zoom situation, I like to see some representation from the fire department at our meetings.
I concur.
I don't think, you know, I know he do a good job and I support him, but there should be somebody show up just to, so we know they're there.
Yep.
We could divide now even. We don't, we don't have to have the Zoom problem. Yeah, well, I got you, Jack.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the financial report for the month of February, traffic fines, $1,022.20. Non-traffic fines, $40. Prohibited parking, $35. Clerk of Courts, 269 79. Total, 1366 99. Various account balances. The Police Department checking account, $11,465.45. That balance includes the money that has been set aside to pay for the new firearms. K9 account, $901.20. The usable balance on the department's debit card, 798 73. And the police auxiliary account, $171. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for the mayor?
I got one. Hey, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna start a GoFundMe for you to fix that clock behind your shoulder all the time.
Yeah, it, it's been at 6:30 for about a year.
Okay.
The, the, it, it, it doesn't need fixed. I just didn't pull the, crank the things back up because you would be hearing chiming every 15 minutes all meeting long. The, the, you know, I have a really nice apartment, but typical of churches, it's an echo chamber.
Yeah.
And when my grandfather clock chimes, everybody in the building hears it. So I appreciate the offer and, and when I, when I go, when I do crank it back up, if it doesn't work, I'm going to be calling you.
All right.
See if you're still willing to help out.
All right. Well, it's right twice a day, right?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. McKnight, Solicitor's Report.
We have Resolution 2021 06 for your perusal and for your adoption. It approves the addendum to the Intergovernmental Agreement for Trash Collection and incorporates the new contract beginning July 1st to our trash collection efforts. Any questions?
Just checking, there was one area where it said township instead of borough. Did we fix that?
We can easily do that and email it to you in the morning.
I, it was just a very minor thing. It wasn't, it didn't mean anything really. Okay. All right, do we have a motion to approve Resolution 2021 06?
They moved.
It's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, next up, IRS response.
It's, as far as we know, the responses that they have are application. They're working on it. No one can tell how hard or where it's being worked on, but that's their only response.
All right.
Marcus, you said at the EDA meeting that you thought if it is issued later in the year, it would cover contributions made anytime during the year?
Sure. We, the organization is a nonprofit organization. That hasn't changed. We're asking for official rec, recognition of that by the IRS and they give us a letter doing that. So it doesn't change the fundamental nature of our organization.
Right, but we have to have the designation to be able to have it be tax deductible for businesses, right?
Well, it, businesses are more comfortable when they see the letter. No question about it, but, but for individuals or for I would contribute to the organization. In fact, I have plans to, so.
Good.
And, and I'll put it on my taxes and quite frankly, my accounts will be perfectly happy with that. All I have to do is show them a check that I wrote.
All right. And then, Mr. McKnight, we, we will have an executive session issue, I believe, to talk about for personnel, right?
Um, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
The other, the other thing I have done is I have worked with Fred and drafted a new year lease for the, for the police station. So that's, that's ready to be signed. It would be appropriate, I think, to have a motion adopting that one. I think it's been circulated. Have you guys seen it?
Yes.
I think it would be appropriate to have a motion to sign it.
Did everybody else see the lease?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so we need a, a motion to approve the lease between the Newville Police Department and Mr. Schwartz.
So I moved.
It's been moved, second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, anything else?
I don't think so.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. McKnight? Okay, Mr. Potzer.
During the past year, did a little bit of tabulation and combined home sales in 2020 totaled $3,400,000, which was the highest amount of home sales in the borough in 28 years. Prices range from a low of 21,000 to a high of 243,000. Many of our homes are selling in the upper 190s to low 220, 225. The time that homes are sitting on the market is very short in duration. Last August was the busiest month for home sales. And this is all very good news because, you know, last year was the first year that the borough's assessed valuation increased. Now, when you factor in these home sales, that will further help the assessed valuation of the borough. The sale of the Ship Daddy property will also benefit the assessed valuation. Why is this important? Well, the taxes that you levy each year are based on the assessed valuation of the town. When the assessed valuation increases, the revenue from your taxes increase. So this is very important. In talking to some of the residents, when they call in for final water and sewer readings, I have conversations with them and I ask them, why have they selected Newville Borough to buy a home here? Many like the, the community, the quaint charm of the community, the country setting, police coverage, good police coverage, walkability around the town, good parks, good school district. Nine out of 10 times, a mention is made of the trail. Fishing on the Big Spring. Town services, many like the snow removal that's provided. So these are all good things that are happening in the borough. Certainly to see that number of homes sold in the midst of a pandemic is, is very interesting. So everything that you've been doing as a council, the employees, the police department is making a difference and it's, it's leading to a positive change in the borough and I hope it continues. I'd like to talk a little bit, we did send out, Jack and I have been working on letters and I won't hit on this too much. I know Jack will talk later, but we continue to work on the Trail Museum. We do have a commitment from Nancy McCullough. She has sent a letter to council and would like to serve on the committee as would Bob Over. And Newville Historical Society will have a representative. They have just not designated yet a person. And that's all I have under manager's report.
Any questions for Fred? All right, very good, thank you. Real quick, I skipped over the emergency management. There is a report in the packet for you. Mr. Crouch, COG?
Mike, you're muted.
Most, most of the reports by the COG members were routine, spring maintenance, cleanup and so forth. Lower Frankfurt Township is, was going to be discussing the possibility of joining the Southampton Township Intergovernmental Trash Contract. So I don't know if, if Marcus knows if they have done anything in regard to that or not. The see the and then Penn Township was going to be setting up a meeting with Penn Dot, which, you know, we're, we're aware of regarding the concerns with the, all the increased traffic. regarding the concerns with the all the increased traffic because of the warehouses. Two new warehouses are being proposed on the south side of eighty one. Our two new warehouses proposed on the north side of eighty one and there are two new warehouses that are under construction on the south side. FedEx is in the process of are going to be moving into the one that's being completed and they could be hiring up to a thousand employees is is what's reported. So it's a lot of additional vehicle traffic in general, not just truck traffic. So that those are the kind of the some of the key issues, key things that were were mentioned there. Just just the most of it was routine.
Okay, any questions for Michael?
Mike, those those two, one of North End and Newville or North Side eighty one, where are they going to be proposed? Do you know?
There there are two two groups that are seeking to develop their land for warehousing. Charlie Malios and his neighbors have joined together to have an agreement on the one side of the road, on the eastern side, on the western side. Mr. Mainz has come forward with an agreement. He wants to develop develop right across from the Smucker's warehouse, that farm that has the barn on the hill.
Yeah.
The problem with both and all future development is the same, and that is the underpass is woefully inadequate and needs a turn lane to make it safe and there's not enough room for a full-sized turn lane. And today PennDOT has said they'll only permit a undersized lane if the developers agree to indemnify PennDOT from any injury that occurs because of an accident because of an undersized turn lane. So as a result of that, there's sort of there's sort of a stalemate, which is why there are these calls being being done to the to the district, to the PennDOT district.
Thanks. Thanks, Marcus.
Anything else?
Penn Township, I did miss one thing here. Pennship did mention, too, that they their parks and recreation department has received two grants totaling a hundred thousand dollars and they're working with the engineer to begin upgrades to their park this summer. So that was that was some good news.
Okay. All right, Public Safety Committee, Mr. Darius.
I have nothing new to state. It's the same issues we've had before. The light, the sidewalk issues and we've had a great opportunity with the people that we've had that work with the snow cleanup and snow removal and things like that. Now they're cleaning the streets as well. Although those some of those are partly safety issues, but they're also general maintenance issues. They do a great job for us in the borough and we should be very thankful of the work that the that the people that work for us and with us do for us. Nothing new that I can add to it at this stage. Same issue.
Bob, I see in a a motion to approve the proposal for Moorfield Communications on the agenda?
Yes. What is your feeling toward that?
So so there's a there's a proposal to from Moorfield Communications to provide server upgrades for the Newville Police Department and the cost of one thousand three hundred ninety three dollars.
That should be that should be a welcome thing to do as far as I can tell. But I'm not knowledgeable about the details.
Chief, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't think I personally do that right now. I know we discovered some other issues there with the Ethernet switch and low speeds on our Comcast. We recently made some changes and I think that issue has gotten a lot better. I don't I don't think that's something that we need to do right now.
Okay, motion to table it would be appropriate.
You want?
What other possibilities exist? What are other options?
So so here's my question. Whatever you were putting in there, would it be transferable to another location in the future?
Yes.
Okay, or Fred, does that does another location already? Does that do there's does that equipment? Is that part of the part of that plan? Everything all on the table.
Is our body cam footage. We use a lot of space for our for our videos and with, you know, four full-time officers now and having more calls for service, that's taking up a lot more space and the and the server, which is our hard drive essentially for the whole department, is getting fairly full. Like I said, I've made I've made a couple adjustments in the issues that we were having where it kept giving us a an error and shutting off has really dropped off. It was happening a couple times a day. Right now, it's maybe once a week. But at some point, we're probably gonna have to expand and make it bigger. And and definitely, that's definitely something we're gonna have to do down the road either way. But as far as being an emergency right now, I I can't say that it's it's an emergency.
Wouldn't you think it might become an emergency, Chief? Let's teach.
Well, right now, we're working with with Comcast on our internet service. We had a really low speed that we were using on an outdated plan and we upgraded that about a week and a half ago and it actually hasn't upped our service. They're coming out tomorrow to do some checking on our wiring and see why our speed didn't really jump whenever they upped their plan. So I'll know tomorrow more on that side.
What are the security implications of what's going on there at this stage?
Security wise?
Yes, safety or security.
I don't think there's anything with the server that gives us a safety issue. The main thing was that the the server, the hard drive was getting full and it was tripping off and it's monitored by Moorfield remotely and they kept getting the error every night that the that the server was was not available. But like I said, that has decreased with some of the stuff that we've done here over the last month.
So for now, you're happy with what's going on and?
I think we're getting somewhere. I can't say that it's fixed, but I think we're making progress and I'd hate to spend the money right now. I don't think it's totally necessary.
But I guess you'd let us know at another stage if there is a necessity upgraded or?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
So you're good to put that on the back letter?
Seems that way.
Okay.
Chief. I'd make a motion then to we table this for later time.
I'll make the motion.
So Michael moved it. So Bob, you're seconding it?
Yes, I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, Fred, did you? Did you have something you wanted to say?
No, no.
Anything else for Mr. Darius? EDA, Mr. Erickson?
Thanks, Scott. So I sent out the EDA materials at the last minute minute meeting last week. And I'll talk a little bit about that, just some of the important points there and then a few things outside of the EDA meeting, but that are kind of important developments. Yeah, at the EDA meeting, Chris talked with the board about soliciting money from large corporations as a way of helping to have the the EDA become self-sustaining. You know, the budget this year requires the EDA to come up with eighteen thousand dollars of its own money. And he talked to them about a plan for doing that. He will be approaching, he and the board members will be approaching large corporations with foundations. And that was broadly supported by the board. And so that will start moving forward soon. The five oh one C three status is important. He's anticipating that people will be asking about that, but this same conversation came up with Marcus at that meeting and I think Chris was satisfied that he can go forward at this point on the assumption that it's gonna come through. He also talked about the feasibility study that he was proposing to develop for West for office rental purposes. The idea would be to use the proceeds to support the EDA. But a feasibility study is necessary to make sure that, in fact, if you build it, they'll come or if you rent it out, they'll come. And the kinds of problems that you might face in trying to do that, the board approved that or approved a thousand dollars for the study pending a successful review of the land use planning. On the committee updates, there was no advisory committee meeting. Joey gave an update on that at the last meeting. They have a meeting planned for sometime in May, I think.
Yay.
On the prospect hosting committee, you know, when we met last time, we were ready for outreach, but there were some concerns raised about property availability. If you look at our website, there was only one property listed that's available for business owners that might want to come into town. And Valerie Copenheber raised this fairly strongly that we don't want to be going out to talk to real estate brokers, small businesses, banks and others and sending our literature around, asking them to call us and then finding that when they do, there's no place to put them. The problem was kind of precipitated by the fact that, you know, Jason was Jason Malat was handling that with everything else on the prospect hosting committee. And then when he was retired or resigned, there wasn't anybody else to do it. He had sent out a letter to all the commercial property owners, had gotten only one or maybe two responses, which yielded that one property that we were able to list. But we need somebody to be doing that on a, you know, regular basis. Somebody has to be prospecting for those kinds of properties, not only in terms of what listings are out there, but but folks who know landlords and property owners to be able to know when they might be willing to do that sort of thing and would reach out to them. We had a conversation with Vince Malat or Andrea Dib, who's on the EDA board, and Vince agreed to try to step into that role. He also said he was gonna talk with Ed and I believe he's talked to you now, Ed, about this.
He has. He called me, yes.
Yeah, good. And so between Ed and and Vince, we're gonna try to reactivate that prospect or the property prospecting. We need to get some properties online before we can actually reach out to to others. Chris also reported on a conversation he had with a businessman who's interested in property in Newville, bringing a business here. Discussed a couple of properties that are out there. There's Chris has spoken again to that person. There's some ongoing interest. If it looks like there's some real interest, if it matures into into something a little bit more definite, then we will connect him up with the Prospect Hosting Committee Guidance Process. You know, Valerie Copenheber will be involved and others of us and will be able to, you know, provide the kind of services we've talked about for him and for others who might be forthcoming, but this sounds like a a real possibility, but we should know more in the not-too-distant future. Chris also discussed, you know, property or I'm sorry, off-street parking is a huge issue for us in terms of development. Chris talked to the board, not for the first time, about using the blighted property program as a way of taking control of properties that could then be turned into off-street parking. So that conversation was is still ongoing. Fred has submitted updated letters updating the blighted property role. So and the county has said that they have more money this year than they will have than they've had in the past for this sort of thing. So Chris is looking at that as a an important way to try to get some off-street parking done here. That was pretty much it for the meeting. Other developments, I think, as we all know, that we had a successful liquor license petition campaign. We got, I guess, what, got twice the number of?
Yep, double one was needed.
Yeah, and which is great. So then, you know, we need to think forward to the next step, which is the May primary. Scott asked me to develop some talking points through social media that we could use as we, you know, develop a strategy for how we're gonna do this. I drafted them and he has them. But we can use those perhaps on our own website, on our Facebook page. But it would also might be make sense to for us to have a discussion either at a public work session or in a separate meeting about how exactly we want to go forward with this campaign. It's important that we we succeed in this May primary and it's probably gonna take some effort and some focus to do it. So I think at some point, we ought to put this on the agenda to just brainstorm with all of us about how to make this happen. And let's see, what else? One other thing on the Rail Museum, Fred mentioned this earlier. As you recall, we had a January public session meeting with Alan Dietrich Ward and Jim Stanton, Stanton, sorry, who are the or two of the sort of key players at the CBRTC on getting the Chippensburg Museum up and running. As I think we all recall, the first priority was to set up a committee to head up this effort. Fred mentioned that some invitations but we're still reaching out to others. Yesterday, after Fred and I conversed, I I talked with or sent communications out to Alan Dietrich Ward and to Jim Stanton, both the two gentlemen that were here in January. Alan has agreed to serve on it, which I think is a real bonus for us because he understands how this all works. I'm hoping Jim will too. Because he's really the railroad guy. I mean, he understands railroads and how you get access to this stuff. So I think we're, you know, well-launched here. We've got about, I think, for my count, about five people that are already willing to serve a few more invitations out, but that, once we, you know, assemble the committee, I think we can start moving forward with our strategy. I mean, unless you have questions or comments on any of this.
Anything else for Jack? Okay, thank you, Jack. Recreation Committee, Mr. Sinkovitz?
Yes, sir. Well, as you know, we had a meeting March twenty third at the Borough Office. Everybody's there in full force, had their masks on, but we were there. We had, I'm just gonna run down a couple of things that we discussed, kind of itemized. We had a nomination election of officers. So Chris Feller, because last year he was nominated to be the president, we only had one meeting before COVID shut us down. So he agreed to continue on as a president this year, which is really, really good. He's really comfortable with it and wants to do it. He has some other churches involved with him, so it's gonna be really good and I think he's gonna be really an asset for us with this borough. Number two, we had some summer recreation programs with Jody, Sandy Briermesser talked about. We have some concert dates lined up. The date's not gonna change, but the the bands might. We have May twenty fifth, June twenty or May twenty eighth, June twenty fifth, July twenty fifth, August twenty seventh and September twenty fourth. It's gonna be here at the park or at the fountain. We don't know which they're all gonna be there. But that's good. Just get this going and I think to get the prices for us, I think, it's pretty much solidified. And Scott, I think you were working on somebody also the one night week. So that that's really a a thing that's really gonna help us, I think, to enhance this summer program. Number four item was we scheduled the use of ball field with Design Church. Kevin has the ball field just really taken all year. We're up till the end of October with leagues, with tournaments. So we're really gonna have a busy summer down there. We're just trying to make sure everybody wants a portion to use the the block pork in some capability for the church or organization. Have to work with Kevin and that and he's really wants to help everybody. They do have they do have some weekend tournaments scheduled for Have to work with Kevin and that and he's really wants to help everybody. They do have, they do have some weekend tournament scheduled for Little League. Then the girls softball league, fast foot softball league is gonna be intertwined there. So. Our our park's gonna be busy this summer and that's that's a good thing too. That's something we've been working for and he really. Does a fine job down there and he needs a little help, but he does does a great job with that. Another thing we talked about Fred, Scott and I done is renovation of the press box. And we were gonna totally renovate it from the ground up. Do some things, but Fred suggests we just kind of tear it down and get some prices and put up some type of a small building. To include a little press box, which Kevin is asking for. Maybe Fred can elaborate on that more. Some equipment we might might have, so I make sure I get it correct. But that is something that's really going nicely during the summer times, we get some heavy rains and that. Floor gets flooded, but the so Fred cut some, my idea is to raise the foundation and just to. Put a different type of building there. Fred, maybe you want to elaborate on that then after I'm done with this.
Sure, go ahead and finish up.
Okay, yeah. The Gaga Ball Pitch, which we've been talking about for a couple of months now. That's scheduled for April twenty twenty one. The Nick Spelman Eagle Scout Project is handling that. That's gonna be the cost of a twenty six hundred and ten dollars. That's funded. Access to real repairs, Fred can talk about that too. That's just right behind the back stuff and the bleachers there where they put in the sewer lines. Am I correct there Fred?
That's correct.
That's gonna be, wants to be repaired. Drinking fountain is the trailhead. That's something he spoke to Jack and I about and Jack approached Combe Valley Rails Trail. They want to put in a special. System here, not a drinking fountain, just a place to fill containers. So Jack and I haven't then let our meeting come up with rails and trails. We'll express that again with them just to see. Where we can go with that. That's cost about thirty eight hundred dollars, I think, something in total. Am I correct in that Fred roughly?
That's right.
And then grant app. Grant application for the splash pad, which we've been talking about for years or so now. And that's gonna be a grant also for about fifty thousand dollars. So Fred has to do some plumbing designs there to to enhance that. But that's what we really talked about, the whole highlighted that meeting, which I thought was very, very fruitful. Just guys, some other things want to talk about. Chris Fowler, he had a meeting Sunday at his church with other churches in the area and they want to do a. A summer program for for Fridays called Faith and Fun in a Park. And it's gonna be sponsored pretty much by a couple of churches. I don't think we'll really have to put any money into that at all. Other the initial. Initial offering, but that's something he's undertaken with the churches in the area. So that's gonna be a enhancement for us at the park again. The park's gonna get hit pretty hard this summer and. We get all these things in place. We're gonna have a nice place. It'd be really a. Fun place for people to come to out of town and just, we're just opening this park up for the community in the area here. So I think with the cooperation of Chris and Jody and just other people. Something really be proud of and I think it's gonna in conjunction with Jack's trying to do, it's probably gonna bring new people to town here. And just to see what the potential is for the little town of Newville, what we can do, what we want to do. So all these things are gonna come together. Everything is is in order. We have a program we have that we want to do. It's just a matter of getting it done. Friends ready for some grants and I think you can elaborate on that a little bit more than me. Oh, that's that's pretty much what we have. We have a full agenda for the park. Kevin, again, Kevin has powerful softball and baseball. And we're ready to go. So Fred, if you want to elaborate in those the grants, voice of me.
Sure, the press box, all we have in mind is to demolish the existing structure. It's well over thirty five, maybe forty years old. Renovating it is not an option because the building sits below grade and it floods. We'd like to do is use their public works department, remove the building. For a new pad, which would be. Six to ten inches above grade and the grade would be the alley running through the park. Get our floor of the new building up higher than the existing grade to prevent flooding. Put a ramp into the building, reconnect the water and electric. We're looking at structures constructed by Louisville Structures or Fisher Structures. Both are up in Perry County. We use them before projects in town. Hoping to do that work this year. Again, that would be something that we would fund from the recovery act. Regarding the splash pond and the access road, both of those tie in. We are going to apply for block grant monies and hope to do the splash pond with a sixty thousand dollar block grant. But in order to do that, we have to get the utilities up there upgraded. The new splash pad will require a sanitary sewer drain. Which is not available now. So we're going to have to run a lateral. Up to the new splash pad, cap it for now and connect it to our north interceptor sewer line. Which runs right there behind the restroom. So that's something again that we could do in house with our employees. I think while we're at it, we should upgrade the service line, the water service line, make sure that's in good shape. And again, that's something we could do with our water and sewer employees. So once we have those utilities upgraded. We're going to have to cut across the access road, then we could have. Capital paving come in. He's got a small paver and Dylan or Dylan can pave that. Right up to the area of the. Community garden, resurface everything and it'll be in nice shape. So those are the things that we have in mind for this year and next year.
And also we talked about the concession stand. We have to put some money into that. We'd like to be able to use that this year for fundraiser. And it's gonna be a cost approximately five thousand dollars for suppression hood put in there, which we can get company called Kent to do that. That's some some plans Fred has there also. We have a hot dog roll there, popcorn machine and. We're gonna be ready. I'm pretty excited about the park this year. Provide the weather holds up and all the funding comes to the place. That's pretty much what I have, Scott.
Any questions, Fred?
No, but to add to the faith and and fund, their opening day is gonna be June eighteenth. And their ending date is August thirteenth. And I know that they were hoping to be able to use the concession stand and also the restrooms. Are they just gonna have the porta pott? That was questioned on Sunday night at that meeting.
The the restrooms should be opened up after after frost or freeze, right?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And only when someone is there to attend to them.
Okay.
And I think the concessions, we, well, we talked about them at the meet at the meeting. I know, I know Kevin would like it sooner than later, but you know, I think some of this is contingent on. When this money comes in from the recovery act, so.
Yeah, it's a big undertaking, but I think when it's done, we'll really be proud of that and have something to bring people to town.
I was just wondering, is there any money? For small municipalities under the infrastructure. Huge proposal, multi billion dollar proposal that the federal government is. Seems to be pushing at this stage. Anybody knows anything about it? Would we tap into it?
Bob, there's just not enough details. I don't even think the people in Washington know. What that will include there. We have no details on that at all, what it may be for boroughs and townships. If it's like the last infrastructure bill, we will get a request. Sometime during the packaging of the legislation. To submit what they will ask for is shovel ready projects. And those projects would be the first to be funded.
And we have that list ready to go.
We always have a list. You know that.
Correct me in this. We discussed August twenty first, back to school, to high school. Is that part of this?
We did, we did talk about that, yes. But that, I don't think they would need the park for that then.
Yeah, I mean, okay.
Yep.
Then what about August third? We talked, kind of talked about that the night out. So if that's just a plan of restages.
Yeah, I haven't heard, Chief, maybe you have a little bit more on the first night out. Or not first night out.
Night out.
I'm mixing all my festivals together.
That's something that we start. Planning in April. I think I got a day or two. I don't know. Where we're gonna be, you know, in August when it comes to. Outdoor gatherings. I know they're saying what twenty five percent capacity and twenty five percent capacity of what? That in order, how do you figure capacity for a street fair?
Well, the there is a, you can do fifty, let me start over again here. I believe it's to go to fifty percent. In April and you can base that on square footage. So for example, if you use the park. You can use the park square footage and the field square footage and that could all be tabulated into what what it is. So fifty percent of that would, you know, and that's that's as of April. If things go the way they project. August should be, should be okay.
Well, they're talking about a fourth wave, so I don't know.
Yeah, if you can get me the formula on that, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll try to look at, look it up tomorrow and see if I can, I can round that up. I know we've needed, we needed to use it for athletic events, but. When when there's not seating capacity, they do have for open space and it's based on square footage. That guy's.
Hey Chief, is August third to date though?
The first Tuesday in August, so if that's what.
Okay, thanks.
Oh yeah, it's our our work session night because I remember I asked if we could postpone our work session night. Not month till a different day.
Yeah, it'd be the third.
Yeah.
Well, we can still do a work session. We could just work at the.
Well, now we need to be out and about.
Randy, did you have something you wanted to say?
That was, you're, you're right. That's what we did last time. You know, the council members all went up and worked at the National Night Out.
It was a true work session.
That's right.
That's right. Randy, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I I wanted to ask Ed. When Kevin hosts like a multi team softball tournament or one of those multi team. Youth baseball tournaments, which last year included teams from out of state.
Yes.
Do they, do they charge each team an entry fee?
Yes, he does.
What's the disposition of those fees?
I don't know.
Is he setting them back to help with some of these expenses or?
Yes, he does. I know that goes towards the park. I know that.
Okay.
Maintenance, yes. I feel safe in saying that, yeah, he does.
Okay.
You can, Fred can crack me in half, but I think I'm pretty certain of that.
Yeah, I think some of that money went into the walls and the.
Yes.
Improvements down there at the. The infield and backstop and so forth. We helped with and he provided funds for some of the backstop. I think we provided the backstop and he paid for the fencing. I'm correct.
Yeah, I feel safe. All that money's being utilized for the park.
I I. I wasn't questioning it.
I know that.
I have no problem with the borough contributing to that. As long as if if they're bringing in revenue, it should be used for the same thing.
Yes, I again, I I don't doubt that he is. I I've never really asked him, but I just heard him speak about monies. That they've had to what they use it for and that is Fred talked the field.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for Ed? Okay, Mrs. Deal, quality of life.
Okay, for my quality of life, I know that at the work session, we talked about honoring some of our. People in the area that have contributed greatly to the success of Newville. And then we had previously honored. Chaney Chang for the food bank and sailors for everything that they've contributed. And I just thought it would be nice to do like Mike and Tara Bender, especially since. This is their last year of ownership of vendors, vendors auto parts. I thought about Bob Baric all the time that he's put in to emergency management. Mike Fry, what?
Hold on, Joey. We did approve at the work session.
But it's on my, it's on the agenda here for tonight too. So I just wanna. Make sure that these people are okay and we need to set a time as to when we're gonna do this.
Yeah, so we did, we did Mike, we did Mike Bender, Bob Baric, Mike Fry, Irvin Barb Nelson. Those were the ones that were approved.
Right, and we're all Fred and I talked a little bit last night because he was helping me with my tent dilemma. The family that is on top of. As a war hill and put out all the decorations that bring a lot of smiles to a lot of people coming in and out of Newville. You know, a little recommendation or, you know, to thank them for. The joy that they bring to to people coming and going. I don't know their name though. I tried to find out. Who it is, so I don't know if. Everybody knows who lives.
It it's actually Terry Over's brother.
Okay.
If you keep talking, I'll find it.
Okay, all righty. So I think what we need to do is set a time. When we're gonna do this and are we gonna do it like we did with the. Other ones that were, you know, just brought them in, you know, very fifteen minutes to the or off some evening and. You know, give them their plaque or do we want to wait till we're in open session again? I just need to to kind of know when.
This year.
This year? Oh, definitely this year. Yes, 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 yes.
You know what? Why don't we do it? I I know this seems like it's a little bit off, but why don't we do it at the concert?
Oh, we could do that.
Yeah, it's outside and you know, there should be plenty of people there. I know the band won't mind us taking. Ten minutes to do that.
Right, right, right. That's fine. We can do that. I wonder their breaks. I'll probably take a break.
What's plan B in case there's inclement weather?
There's not gonna be inclement weather.
Right. Okay, so that it is the, it's in May, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
May twenty eighth.
Yeah, Memorial Day weekend at Friday.
Yes.
Okay. All righty. And then the other thing is the car show. We haven't had a meeting yet on it, but I know that. Kathy Lloyd has been seeking donations from some of the larger, you know, sponsors. To see about, you know, getting things to, you know, give away. To. You know, just help and erase some money to give to the P A wounded warriors. And I think I probably need to get a letter fixed up and, you know, so we can send out. You know, to area organizations and we really hate to hit them too hard this year because. You know, they're all in the same boat as, you know, even businesses with not having the money. But you know, our plans are to have it September the eighteenth. Down at the park. So and I've already cleared that date with Kevin, so we're good there. That's all I really have.
Okay, any questions for Joey?
I have a generic question, not for her necessarily, but maybe for all of us to think about. We could have. A letter of appreciation. Letter of commendation, things that that nature, different various types of recognitions. That we could provide to people who help us and make this community a better place. that we could provide to people who help us and make this community a better place. Just something to think about.
Very good. Joey didn't talk long enough. I couldn't find it. I'll find his name and I'll get it to you.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Let me check YouTube here. I think we got a question. The one question is, has anybody been in touch with Zion Luthen about parking on Sundays and Saturdays during ballgames? Yes, that comes from Lucy Gensima. Lucy, that has been a appro, they've been approached and a solution has been made, so they have signs. I should say the softball teams have signs and they will put them up Saturday nights before their main events. So that way spectators to the baseball games don't park in Zion's parking lot. And correct me if I'm wrong, Joey, you guys worked with them on that, right?
Yes, yes, we did. We told them that they could use it after 10:30, basically. Because once that, our search service starts at a quarter to nine and it ends usually around 10. Now, everybody is gone. They can use our parking lot after that.
Yeah. And then she, she further asked about can they use the school parking lot? And that's my understanding is that, you know, school's not in session, so they can use those parking lots. And I, I know Kevin has directed them to park up there in the past, but sometimes when people are coming from out of state, they, they see a parking space and they just take it. And there was a suggestion, what about honoring Carolyn Coe? So that one.
We can add her.
Want to add her?
Yeah.
So let's, let's make a motion on that.
She certainly deserves to be added.
Okay. So do we have a motion to add Carolyn Coe to the recognitions?
I make the motion.
Remove. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded.
And the unknown name, the gentleman that we don't know yet.
Well, we had, we'll add his name to this motion as well.
Okay.
We know where he lives. We just.
Right.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. All right, anything else for Joey then? Administration Committee, Mr. Crouch.
And I am going to have to ask Fred to fill in on this one because I have been totally overwhelmed at work and have not had a meeting with him in about two weeks, so he'll have to fill in for me here.
Okay, so we, we did open bids on March the 12th. Two bids were received for North Corporation Street Improvements. The low bidder was Slusser's Paving, $151, 664. The other bid came from New Enterprise Stone and Limestone, $228, 500. The bid of Slusser's did not include certain documents that were required for HUD. So we wrote back and requested the HUD documentation. When that was provided, a new bid was provided from Slusser's as well. Once you've opened a bid, the bid stands. You cannot amend or alter your bid. So it's the engineer's recommendation at this time that the Borough Council, in fairness to everyone, should reject all bids received and rebid the project. Hopefully, we could open in late May, but at this time, Mr. Cormines made the recommendation to reject all bid. And to rebid.
I would make a motion that we reject all bids and then rebid the project accordingly.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Crouch?
I have nothing other than that.
Any questions for Mr. Crouch? All right, let me go back to YouTube, check the citizen comment. Nothing else has been added. All right, correspondence. Fred? Looks like we, I can take the first one since, or no, the second one. Go ahead and do the first one.
Are we on correspondence or did you have a citizen?
No, we're on correspondence.
Okay, first item is we have a, an email from Catherine Gunell, who is a legislative aide to Senator Judy Ward. And this is dated March 16th and regarding the truck traffic issue in the borough, they have been in contact with PennDOT. They have shared with PennDOT our January 27th letter. And PennDOT informed the senator that we should be receiving a response from them by the end of March. So they've got one day to communicate to us. We have a request from a group known as Core Newville. This is a consortium of six area churches. And they are presenting the faith and fun days in the park. They would like permission to use the park on Fridays from 10 a.m. till 12 noon on June 18th through August 13th. So if council could approve that request.
Make a motion right now?
Yep.
I make a motion, we approve that?
Second, sorry.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I don't know if you want to consider this. It was not included in their request, but in previous years, the borough has donated $250 to purchase lunches for this program. Does Borough Council wish to make a $250 donation this year?
I'm making a motion, we make it a $250 contribution for lunches with that program.
I second.
Removed and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
The next item is from Pat Reed, Chairman of the Joint Veterans Council. And Pat is requesting council's cooperation in closing the streets for the parade and service on Memorial Day, May 31st, from 1 p.m. to 3 p.m. This would include Walnut Street, Big Spring Ave., South High Street, West Main Street for the parade. And there will be a brief service. There will not be any music. I understand it's going to be an abbreviated session. But they still wish to have an observance, and this is going to be sponsored by the Joint Veterans Council.
I'll make that motion.
Removed and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, and the next item is a request from the Big Spring High School class of 2021. The class has requested the borough's cooperation in coordinating a procession as we did last year. This will be June 9th, 2021, from 5:30 p.m. to 8 p.m. And in the motion, please include authorization to coordinate with North Newton, West Pensboro, and PennDOT.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
We have received a letter from Mike or Matt Cunningham, who chairs the Property Committee for First United Presbyterian Church. The Property Committee did meet and the Church Council has approved giving the borough permission to trim back a tree which overhangs Springfield Ave. Near the intersection with C Cedar Street. So we have been given permission and during the summer, we will have the Cumberland Valley Tree Service come back and take care of that. And that's all that I have under correspondence.
All right, very good. Joey, here's this name.
Oh, okay.
It's Brad Darren, D-A-R-O-N.
D-A-R-O-N, okay, thank you.
D is in dog.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. All right, moving down to old business. We talked last meeting about the traffic lights, so let's spend a little time on this. And, you know, I don't, I can't say that anything's changed over the past month. But I did share with you guys a letter. And I think just for the general public to know, they probably should know a little background on this. So let me, let me go through some of this, so bear with me. It's not going to be new to you. But a little bit of the history, I think, is important. So just so everybody knows, you know, the borough has worked with PA DOT for a number of years regarding this issue of lights turning, trucks turning at the intersection of Main and High. It resulted in signage, I believe that that signage went up, well, five, five or more years ago that prohibits the turn of trucks that are larger than 25 feet. We have also worked with the limited number of warehouses in Penn Township. That number is growing, so the problem is going to continue to grow as well. We attempted to get them to notify the drivers that turns there would be illegal. I think we all know that that might have been in vain. I don't think that that, that communication happens to every driver that pulls out of there. At times, we have been successful to work with the landfill and some local quarries to reduce truck traffic through the streets. And, you know, they've, they've usually been fairly good about working with us on that. But those, those trucks are not the cause of the red light issue. We've also contacted GPS companies. I believe the, the chief has done that and to notify them of the no turn law. And I think we've gotten nowhere on that situation. They, they haven't changed their GPS systems to, to note that. In 2019, we approved signage to be hung on the cable, cable system. Tonight, I think one of our motions later on is going to be to replace that cable system because we can't hang anything else on it. The cable system needs to be replaced anyways. So once that, once we replace the cable system, the signs could go up there again noting that, that that's a no turn or a no right turn for, for trucks. In the second half of 2020, we began discussing this again. And those discussions have involved our Chief of Police. We've initiated a letter in January, which Fred has referred to, requesting that PennDOT meet with us on site. That we have received no response to that letter. After three months, we engaged our Senator, Senator Ward, which she, she basically took the letter and moved it on to PennDOT, but she gave us, she gave her endorsement to it. So we're still waiting on that meeting. So a couple of the issues here, those are state roads. They're governed by PennDOT. There's very little that we can do about it. The two roads. The Police Department collects a minimum amount of money. I think Chief shared that with us in the fall. There's very little money collected from the tickets on the borough's behalf for illegally turning at the red light. It's pretty time consuming and officers certainly could be doing other things at that time. GPS systems, we know, don't always note the turning at the red light that is restricted. Truck traffic through the borough has increased a great deal since the warehousing has gone in. Our borough streets were developed nearly 200 years ago, so houses were put right up against the streets. They're not designed to accommodate the current size of vehicles that we have. And much of the truck traffic going to the warehouse is not from the warehouse drivers who work for the warehouses. They're either subcontracted or independent truckers. So in other words, you know, the trucks going into Office Depot are not necessarily Office Depot employees. So in that, in that letter, we talked about a bunch of different possible solutions. I don't want to go down through each and every one of them, but how about we have a discussion about some of them? If you, if you want to look at getting serious about a couple of these things.
Well, I guess Mike questioned, what can we really do about it, other than the state doesn't do something?
Well, Ed, the, the problem is now, and the chief pointed it out, the trucks are now going onto side streets.
Yes.
The other night, I saw a truck hit a sign over on South Corporation Street. Last Friday, we watched a tractor trailer come up West Street, went out Big Spring Avenue and came back in town by way of the alley next door here on Glebe Avenue. Tractor trailer actually came down the alley. So you control those streets. You, the Borough Council, control the borough streets. And the chief had made a recommendation for local deliveries only, a weight limitation, so that trucks should not be using those streets. I think that's a good step. One of the things the chief has requested is video cameras to be upgraded so that those cameras could have better recognition of license plates. We've also discussed making an ordinance for striking the traffic light or damaging borough property as a means of making it a little bit more stricter enforcement of the fines and so forth. So those are a few of the things that have been discussed. Chief, I don't know if you have anything that you'd like to add to that?
We've noticed a rather brisk increase in, in truck traffic and, and these issues over the last month. I'm not sure that, why that's happened. I don't think anything new has opened up that I'm aware of. But the last month has, has really seen an increase. I put our radar box out on West Main Street early February and, and did a traffic study on, on Main Street, trying to see if there's a day of the week or a time of day that's really consistent for us to do, you know, an enforcement detail at a specific day or specific time. It's really random. There was no patterns whatsoever that I could come up with in, in, on the radar box. I've gotten with Carlisle Borough. They offered to help us do some, some truck enforcement. We're still working on that. They were going to come up last week and, and look at what we're dealing with and, and see if we have a safe area in town to do truck enforcement, in their opinion. That didn't happen last week, but they did give us some pointers on some sections of the vehicle code that we could be utilizing. We did start doing that. We talked about scales a little bit with them. From what I gather, you know, as far as, as far as the streets go in the borough, we don't have any restricted roads or bridges due to weight. And without those restrictions, they don't think it'd be very fruitful to go the, the way of getting scales. They are going to come up in the next week or two. We're going to plan some sort of truck enforcement detail here. And we're also going to help them do a detail or two throughout the county. We've had probably five or six incidents now on side streets where signs have got run down, trees have gotten knocked over, cars have gotten hit. It's a couple of days a week now that, that we're dealing with this. A lot of the traffic's going to the turnpike. I know I mentioned. A lot of the traffic's going to the turnpike, I know I mentioned in my email prior that I had a couple, uh, cars hit there on, on Main Street that I had to write search warrants for the turnpike to get their video. Um, it's just time consuming, you know, we have other things around town that are much more important that I'm not going to go into detail about, that we should be spending our time on, um, than this. Um, we definitely need to look at this as heavy as what we can.
And in that regard, Chief, I would say that, um, investing time in trying to do truck inspections and so forth is really, um, an unnecessary diversion of your effort and, and, and resources because I work in the, in the business, as you know, in the trucking business, and the trucks are coming through here for the most part. Um, we're not, you're, we're not, we're not going to get results, um, they're not going to fail an inspection, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Um, so we're the, and as far, you're right with the scales, again, most of these trucks with what they're hauling weight is not an issue because they're not exceeding the, the legal, uh, federal weights or the, or the state limits, limits. So we have no restrictions on our streets. The best thing that we could do as, as a Borough, in my opinion, would be to just simply put up signs on the, the side streets that have any, any room for a truck to possibly turn saying no trucks, local traffic and local deliveries only. And, um, that would, that would be the most effective thing that we could do, I think. Really, uh, if we can finally get some, something done with Penn dot, probably if we could get them to put up signs out at the, out at Route 11, basically saying no trucks beyond Route 11, except local traffic, and the same way in, at down at Newburgh, uh, when trucks come from the turnpike into Newburgh, have signs there, uh, saying no trucks, you know, toward Newville, except local deliveries and, and that, that's would probably take care of the, the, most of the problem.
Now, to handle all those side streets, that, you know, I think we need a, a blanket ordinance that covers all the other streets in the Borough, which would give us, you know, something to enforce and that they do get on those streets, but that requires an engineering study on each one of their streets for us to do that.
So besides Glebe Avenue, Fred, are there any other street, what are the main streets that, uh, these guys are using, uh, side streets?
Well, oddly enough, uh, a truck just came down West Street five minutes ago. Uh, we see trucks on West Street all the time. Um, last Friday was a big day for West Street. Uh, they've started to come up South Corporation Street. So my suggestion would be for the Borough Council to accept the recommendation from Chief Kosher. He's out dealing with this every day. Get a list of streets from the chief in the form of a recommendation and authorize Martin and Martin, Tim Cormany, to come in and perform a traffic study, and it doesn't have to be extensive, he'll look at geometric design of the roadway, turning radius, sight distance, things like that. He can come in and work with the chief and the officers. Can you still hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's the important. So I, I would suggest that, you know, the, uh, local delivery only study be the first course of action. And, uh, get that started and then start working on an ordinance. Those are things tonight that you can make a motion to put in a place tonight and get started on. And I don't think the engineering study is going to be very expensive. But you're, you're experiencing right now, as the chief mentioned, with damage to private vehicles, damage to street signs, hundreds if not thousands of dollars. So, you know, really, I, I think we can all sit here and blame Penn dot, and we probably won't get much cooperation from Penn dot. But as a Borough, we still control local streets, and you have control over those streets as Borough Council.
And I, I, I like the chief's recommendation too with, uh, uh, creating some sort of an ordinance that is, uh, putting greater penalties in place for damage to the pole and, and, and so forth, and broke other broke.
Why don't we make, make a motion that affect them? It was a good idea the chief has presented to us.
Mr. McKnight, um, is there a dollar value that's pretty appropriate for that?
I, I'm going to go in with, uh, I'll research it and get the highest fines we can get and double those or triple them for anyone who does a second time.
Okay.
You know, so it's, if with fines and doing civil fines, uh, the money comes back to the Borough.
Right.
But I can't stress enough how concerned I am about these trucks on streets where people don't expect them. Um, the damage to children, the damage to the elderly, the damage to irreplaceable things, we can replace signs. Um, I think Fred and I had a discussion not long ago in which we speculated that if we keep having trucks going up West Street or coming down West Street, we're going to have damage to the fountain.
Yeah.
Damage to the fountain would be, um, um, not well received by the Borough residents.
And it's been very close multiple times.
Yeah, you just missed damage to the fountain by a couple of inches last week. Um, I was holding my breath. Fortunately, an officer showed up and was able to prevent that, but it was just inches away.
I'm more concerned about senior citizens getting killed. Walking down the street, just trying to enjoy the quiet tranquility of this borough. Take a walk for their health and suddenly a truck hits them.
So Scott, I, I think two motions would be in order, one would be to authorize Martin and Martin to commence upon the chief's recommendation, the traffic and engineering study. And the second motion would be to authorize Mr. McKnight to prepare a draft ordinance, uh, increasing fines for damage to Borough property.
I make the most.
I would just say all Borough property, street signs, traffic, whatever.
Yeah, it could be anything, right?
Yes.
Um, okay, so the, let, let's do this one at a time, so the first, first, uh, motion would be uh, for the traffic study by Martin and Martin, just as Mr. Potzer, I referred.
I'll make the move.
Okay, we had about six people make the motion, so one of you seconded.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, and seconded and seconded, uh, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no? Any abstentions? Motion carries, all right, and so Chief, you, you'll, you'll work with, uh, Fred to get that list of streets, so that way Martin and Martin can get going on that?
Sure.
Super. All right, the second motion is to, uh, have Mr. McKnight draft an ordinance, uh, regarding pri, uh, public property damage. Need a.
I'm going to make it any, any property damage.
Oh, any property damage, okay. So, it's been moved, is it seconded?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, opposed say no? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, so a couple other items that were on.
One, one thing with that Scott, Marcus, is there, uh, is it possible to, to, uh, make that ordinance eh, that, so that it, uh, affects the trucking company, not just the driver? Because that's what will really get trucking companies' attention and make, and start to make a bigger difference, because a lot of these drivers are only coming through here one time. Uh, and they're, you know, so, but the trucking companies have repeat drivers coming through, I know I've seen several drivers from the same company, you know, it's coming and making a turn and so forth. But, uh, so if it's just a driver getting a fine, the trucking company doesn't care. They'll just, they'll keep telling the drivers, come this way, but if we can somehow apply, uh, to the trucking companies and it, it starts to have a, a financial impact on them, then that's, that's what gets attention in my experience.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
I'll, I'll incorporate that into the ordinance.
Would it, would it be helpful to run this by, uh, Mrs. Kowick at some point to, to see what she, uh, what her thoughts are on it?
Well, she, her thoughts will be that, uh, unless, unless she gets some memo from her higher ups that, uh, she normally looks at our ordinance isn't completely, uh, my experience is she does follow our ordinances.
Okay.
So as we have proper drafted penalties and, uh, unless she gets some further instruction from, uh, anyone else that's, uh, either from the, the, uh, her superiors from the court or wha- whatever, she's going to do what our ordinance is saying.
Very good. Um, any discussion?
Trucks, Scott?
Uh, well, I, I wanted to hit video camera upgrades, we had talked.
That's what I was just gonna.
Here, I was just saying, one of your requests was to do that, go ahead.
Uh, our nighttime cover, we seem to have, be having a fair many of these that happen in the 11:00 PM to midnight hour, for some reason. Um, and our camera coverage at night, sometimes getting a license plate is pretty tough. Um, with the refle- reflection of headlights and streetlights. Um, we've had a lot of trouble lately, which is why I've had to go the route of search warrants and trying to get video footage from, from the turnpike, um, where they're getting on and getting off. Um, I had talked to Crime Intervention, who, uh, we have our cameras through, and they, uh, suggested that we add a couple license plate reader cameras, um, in addition to what we already have, um, at a couple key points. Um, they would work 24 hours a day as far as, um, uh, reading license plates. Um, at some point, we could also hook them to our, um, other license plate reader system, where we could use them for, uh, enforcement of, of other things, the same way we do with the license plate reader that's in the car. Um, but, um, we can put this, the enforcement out there, but if we can't figure out who the people are, it's not going to do any good, so that's something that we want to look at there as well, upgrading those cameras.
Okay, so, so you, you can come back to us at some point with, with what would be best, and we can, we can act on it at that point, does that make sense?
No, I, I can tell you I've already gotten a quote, um, for two cameras. Um, we haven't really decided exactly where to place them yet, um, to have the best coverage, but two cameras is going to be $3,000.
Okay. Is that installed?
Yes.
Okay.
And how many cameras did you say, three?
Two.
Two, oh, I'm sorry.
What are the potential sites where they're going to be installed?
One would definitely be at the red light. Um, the second one, I was thinking maybe up by the intersection of Big Spring Avenue and South High Street.
Hmm.
I hate to put, truthfully, I hate to mount those two cameras on that wooden pole right now, because I'm under the feeling that it's not going to be long till it comes down. Um, and I really hate to put those two on that pole and then.
What's the alternative?
Well, I like to, like I said, I'd like to maybe put one up by Big Spring Avenue and, and put one down there, that way they wouldn't both be in the same place.
Well, that would probably be a good, good place for one anyway, because we have a fair, now, obviously, a lot of the trucks that are coming and turning down West Street are turning onto Big Spring Avenue or something anyway, so that's
Yes.
we really need something that can capture license plates there.
Well, the, the two big directions would be, you know, southbound, because they're either heading that way or they're heading westbound towards the turnpike, so we've got to definitely get those two directions covered somehow, because that's definitely the big hitters. But I can tell you that I've seen trucks turning in every direction in the last month, and like two of those directions, I've never seen a truck turn there before, and in the last month, it's, it's all out the last month.
Hmm. Maybe more than two cameras.
So Fred, how about, how about we, if you can get us those quotes, how about we bring this up at the, uh, work session next week? And, you know, if we, if we can find the funds for it, we'll take action on it.
I'd be willing to kick in some there from our calendar fund.
Okay. Does that sound good, Fred?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know what's happening, Steve, losing my video.
Oh. Um, the other thing was ballards. Uh, is there anything that, um, is there anything we can do about ballards, I mean, I, I'm not sure that that pole's going to take much more, and.
How can we put ballards on a state street or road? Without their permission?
Yeah, does it go on the road or does it go on the curb?
Be, it would be in the Penn dot right of way, and, uh, I did call PP and L. I had a discussion with one of their engineers, uh, who came out, looked at everything. Name was Chad Thomas. Talked to him last week, and I asked him specifically if he thought they would help. Would he put it in writing and submit it to the Borough? So that we could use that in our discussions with Penn dot. Now, I haven't heard anything back from him, Chief, I gave him your name and your contact information.
I didn't hear anything out of him.
Okay, so the, the answer to your question is, can we put them up? Yes. Uh, what we can do is submit a highway occupancy permit request. Uh, have Tim Cormany prepare a highway occupancy permit. Time and cost would be probably about 250 to $300 for the intersection, put one in front of our traffic signal pole, and put one in front of the, uh, PP and L pole. Submit it to Penn dot and see what happens.
Why don't we do that, that's, cost is minimal.
That's what I'm recommendate, uh, my recommendation would be to, since you're not getting a response back from the traffic department, Medtrup Penn dot Highway Occupancy Permit Division, see what they have to say. If they give you a highway occupancy permit, if you're set, you can put your bollard in.
There you go. I make a motion to do that.
So it's been moved, is it seconded?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no? Any abstentions?
That would be question, two traffic ballards?
Is two enough?
Chief, what do you think, two?
Depends how, are we talking about like ballards like that are sheets in front of your parking space, or are we talking about the big planners? Like it's up at the high school?
I would say something like a well casing pipe, eight inch well casing pipe, cored in, concreted. Um, one that comes to mind is at, uh, Walnut Bottom Road and, uh, Hanover Street and Carlisle, they've lost their traffic pole, and they've got a heavy bollard, uh, which is concreted in place, filled with concrete.
Yeah, it definitely, definitely takes something like that, the ones that sheets wouldn't do much to protect the pole from a truck.
Yeah.
I mean, it's at least eight inches in diameter. You hit that, you're, you're going to, you know, it's going to make you stop.
Hmm. That's what we need.
Well, I'm not sure they're going to stop, but I had one the other day that I stood, I was in my office and I stood straight up when the tires hit the pole and it blew out, it sounded like a bomb went off, and that was the whole way up in my office, and that guy kept right on going.
Well, I, the other thing is it should protect the pole.
Yeah.
Because, you know, my fear is that we eventually get a $270,000 new, you know, traffic system there, and three days after it's installed, you know, a truck's hitting it. So, you know, i- if we can get them in, we can at least see that they're working, and I, I believe they make, like, up at school, we have ones, like, like you said. And I, I believe they make, like up at school, we have ones, like, like you said, Fred, I think they're, they're concreted into the ground and then they have some kind of just cover on top of them that just makes it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah.
And you can replace those covers pretty easy. So, okay.
Well, would a single ballard protect each pole Fred, or do you think we need?
I, I would defer, Mike, that's a good question. I would defer to, uh, Mr. Cormany as the engineer. Uh, see what he has to say, but I think if you are in agreement that the highway occupancy permit would be prepared based upon the engineer's recommendation.
Makes sense.
Very good. All right. Well, it was approved, so. So we approved three things, study to, to, uh, shut down side streets except for local deliveries. Uh, Mr. McKnight's going to draft an ordinance for damaged property. And, uh, a study and a, and submission for, um, for us to put traffic ballards into and around the lighting system. Anything else that you can think of that we should, we should address?
That's damage to public and private property, correct?
That's my intent.
Great.
Very good. All right. So a, any other old business? All right, moving down to new business, these, these are all things that came out of the finance committee meeting. So item number one is to approve the purchase of a line painter for a price of $3,700. And those funds would come from the general fund.
My motion?
Need a motion, yes. The move is a seconded?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item number two, approve $1,800 for flag supplies, uh, from Carrot Top Industries. And this would also come from the general fund. I think Jack said so moved, but we didn't hear it.
Yes.
There we go.
Second.
And seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item number three, three, approve the purchase of a new police vehicle financed through, uh, Mid Penn Bank, uh, at three, $37,760 at three and a half percent for four years with a $9,500 down payment from the American Rescue, uh, monies.
Um, I do have a question with that. Why do we need, uh, another police vehicle? Uh, we have two fully functioning vehicles now and I don't know that we ever have more than two officers on duty at a time.
Mr. Mayor, I think you.
Mike, I, I have already given instructions to the chief that the Dodge Charger is not to be used for normal patrol work because it's no longer safe. Sometimes the siren works, sometimes it doesn't. So the, the electronic citation equipment doesn't work. It, there, there's, we have had that car rewired twice. And it hasn't helped. That car's 11 years old. Uh, it is, it's no longer safe for daily patrol use. In addition, we, we have a 2013. That car is, uh, that vehicle is eight years old. We, with the purchase of a new patrol car, we can then extend the life of the 2013. But if we don't purchase the new patrol car, it's only a matter of time where we keep using the 2013 extensively, we're going to find ourselves in a position in a couple of years where you're going to be buying two. Because neither the 2013 or the Charger, um, are going to be viable any longer. I I'm going to expand on, on that and, and I've said this before. I can't remember actually anymore which council I've said it to. You've made a lot of progress here. We have attracted some new businesses. The EDA is showing promise. And Fred just tonight said, uh, talked about the housing sales. And why people are coming here and how fast houses are turning over. And one of the reasons that people get, have given him for that is that they feel safe walking down our streets. We want to keep it that way. I remember a few years ago with the previous council where there were rumors of cutting the department, there were rumors, even rumors of replay, just going to state police coverage. True or not, we ended up having a meeting that had to be held at the firehouse because of the crowd. Who was sitting in the front row, the first two people to take the council to task. Dr. Sholi and Richard Gobin. There, there's, there's certain, and, and, and I'll be the first to admit, because I was in the business for 40 years. Departments, police departments are expensive to run. Whether it's New Vboro or New York City, it's always the largest part of the budget pie. Public safety. But they need the equipment that they need. And, and my fear is not getting that car down the road, it, it's going to stress the 2013 to the point where, it's no longer going to be viable. And, and in my opinion, after 40 years of police work and 40 years of driving police cars, Dodge Charger is not viable now. I, I had said earlier at the finance meeting, the rear, uh, part of the rear bumper and fender are held together with duct tape. It, it is just, it's 11 years old. When, when, when you talk about police cars, a lot of idling time, uh, in the community here, a lot of slow speed driving. Take the mileage that's on that car and double it. Because that's the wear and tear, um, that you have on that vehicle. It's no longer safe.
And I, yeah, I, I, um, I understand that. I wasn't, wasn't talking about the retirement of that car. I was asking, uh, as, because I've gotten questions from citizens about why, why our department needs three cars, uh, in service when, when, uh, with the number of officers that are on duty at any one time. So that's, that was my question, not, not with regard to replacing the Charger.
Okay, you have, uh, you have court days. You have court days at the district justice, you have court days, um, at the county court. Uh, speed details or two man details and these cars need serviced. A car goes in for a service. Uh, if we only had two vehicles, a car goes in for a service and then you only have one. Um, it, it, it's, again, running a police department is an expensive deal, which all of you have been in council long enough to know. But without the equipment that they need, uh, you're going to see, even though they're all good, hardworking officers, you're, you're going to see the efficiency of the department suffer. I went through it. So I hope well, I, I, I guess I answered your question, Mike, in the second part. I, I sort of ran it on a little bit in the first part because I feel passionate about it.
Yeah, and I, and I just, because it's come up to me when I've been out talking to people, I thought it was something, something was best addressed here. So that's, it's on, there's, it's on record that, you know, we, it's why the reasons are, so.
Well, if, if you, if you've gotten those questions out into public, then, then they should be answered. That, that's, um, that's what being a council member is about. And, um, not predicting the future, but probably next year, you will see it from the other side. So, um.
I hear from the public also, they have a nostalgic image of Charlie Bear and part time. I don't think we're maybe anymore, so.
Yeah, he chased me a couple of times in that car he had. Uh, any, any other questions?
Is the Charger useful for?
Be happy to answer.
Is the Charger useful for traded?
Frankly, no.
Can we sell it to a duct tape artist?
It, 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 it's just problematic and there's a gentleman that owns the electrical re, uh, car, electric, electrical repair guy down 641, uh, who's probably one of the best in the area. Probably the very best in the area. He couldn't figure it out. It, it's just not reliable. When you flip the siren switch and it doesn't come on.
I was talking to somebody recently and they said, well, the first, the first mistake was that we bought a Charger in the first, at all.
We thought it really, we thought it looked really cool at the time, Mike, but, but actually it's not that the car has become problematic after 11 years. The car became problematic after about two years.
All right, so you have a, a motion before you, we need to be moved and then we need it seconded.
So moved.
It's been moved, it's been seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item number four.
All of you.
You're welcome, Randy. I do have one thing to, I have something to say. Um, and I know it's getting late, but I was at that meeting that Randy spoke about where Dr. Sholi and Mr. Gobin got up and spoke. And that was a powerful night. And I can, I just remember things started to look up for our police department after that night. Because they, the people in, in Nuvo actually saw the need for them and the want for them. And, um, that, that was a, like I said, that was a moving night and I, I was proud that I was there that night and that, you know, things, people spoke up. And they wanted answers from that then council and, um, that council couldn't really give objective answers. So, um, I agree with, with Randy that when those two men stood up and spoke, it meant something. So that's what I have to say.
You're here.
I think it'd be a great idea if we get to know more about all the great things that the police officers at police department does for the community. It would be nice if they could inform us in greater detail with some of the sessions.
Uh, the chief and I, uh, especially the chief, uh, has, is more than open to having uh, Mr. Darius is, is the chairman of public safety and any other council member who, who would be able to attend to just come to the, to the station, sit in the conference room. And, and that's where you'll get the information, what's going on, what the needs are, what the needs may be. Down the road. There are are, are we going to have an executive session?
Yeah, we are. Yes, we are.
Okay, uh, there are a couple of things all, all, uh, to expand on that, that all, that I'll say there.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
All right, item number four, uh, motion to approve $18,892 to pave church alley and spot repairs throughout the borough. Uh, this would go to Capillary Paving Incorporated and those funds would come from the general.
Don't move.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item number five, uh, motion to approve $3,500 to replace the cables and reset signals and hang signs, uh, at the red light. And this, uh, would be awarded to Pennsylvania perks, um, and it would come from the highway aid fund. Does everybody know what I'm talking about? Okay.
Still move?
It's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Post say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. It's been a long night.
Yeah.
Next item, to approve $1,900 to Alpha Space for thermal line print, painting, uh, from the highway and this would also come from the highway aid funds.
They moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Last one, uh, to transfer $1,000 from the general fund to the police department debit card for the purchase of needed ammunition.
Still move.
The move is it's, and it's been seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Any other new business? Uh, before we go into executive session, there's a couple more comments quick on YouTube. Um, is Big Spring Avenue a state road? Uh, these are all from Lucy Jensenma. Is Big Spring Avenue a state road?
No.
No. It is not. It used to be though, right Fred? Didn't we buy it back?
Yep, we took it back up to the bridge at, uh, Green Ridge and then from there out it's a state road.
Um, and then when, I think when we were talking about, um, ballards, uh, she was mentioning the planners would be nice. And the, the question was, the next question is, would the ballards block the crosswalk? I believe that would be part of the study, uh, from Miss, from Martin and Martin, correct?
Yeah, they, they can't block the crosswalks. They can't impede pedestrian traffic.
Right. Okay. All right, uh, so we do have a need for executive session. Uh, do we have a motion to go into executive session? Been moved, seconded? Anybody second it?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Um, no action will be taken. If action needs to happen, it'll happen once we come out of.